Okay, welcome everybody. It's a little bit after four. This is our February 11, 2015 workshop. You got us on film, right?
Ready to go.
And we've got a busy agenda this afternoon, but I wanted to take a few minutes and let the board and the audience kind of critique our first public information commercial that we're going to be doing. And I bring it up about Mayor Fasona and his idea on the medical drop box, prescription drop box. And this is the video that we've created to actually put a DVD and a screen monitor on the box itself. Then we're going to have this commercial playing. And we have made some new stars in the town of Elton with this video. So let's hope it plays.
Yes.
Is it loading?
It is.
Okay, here we go. Dave, are you?
I'm trying.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth Cole. And I'm here at Lyons Pharmacy with my good friend, Jack. We're here to invite you to come down to Town Hall to leave your medications that you leave around the house, the ones you haven't finished, the ones that you may not be taking anymore. We want you to take them to Town Hall and use the drop box. My friend, Jack, here, we're worried because his friends can get into these medications, they can make them self-sick or even die. And we don't want to see that happen, do we? No. So don't leave your events around the house. Don't stick them out in the garage in a trash can. They can be mixed with food. They can invite my friend, Jack, and his buddies to come in. Don't leave them sitting in cabinets where small children can get into them. Now, take them down to Town Hall, put them in the drop box where we can safely dispose of those medications and keep them out of the hands of those who could do harm.
Cecil County has the highest overdose death rate of any county in the state. About 10% of youths and young adults in our county have used pain medications for non-medical use. Substance abuse is a major contributor to motor vehicle injuries and deaths. Many of us keep unused or expired medications because we don't know what to do with them. Pushing them into the sewer is hazardous waste into the water supply and environment. Scoring them in unlocked cabinets leads to illegal use. The best way to get rid of unused medications is to return them to a convenient and secure medicine return location.
My name's Chris. I'm a person in long-term recovery. Most of my friends know me as Crispy. I'm here today to talk to you guys about prescription drug use and leaving your unwanted pills around the house so that other people who are not prescribed these drugs could get their hands on them. For me, it's where my drug use and opiates took off. If your prescription drugs are unwanted, then do us all a favor and take them to the drug drop box.
My name is Carl Webner. And I'm the overdose prevention coordinator for Cecil County, working out of the Cecil County Health Department. My primary goal in this position is to work to reduce the number of overdosed deaths experienced in Cecil County. There's a number of strategies that we are using at any given time to work on this. And one of those is drug take-back events. It's well documented and it's definitely been researched that drug take-back, essentially just removing medications out of the communities that are no longer being used or expired or for whatever medical purpose that can no longer serve, getting those off the streets, out of homes, out of people's medicine cabinets, absolutely has a lot of positive effects.
Hi, I'm Matthew Donovan, Chief of Police for the Elton Police Department. As you noted, each year in our community and communities throughout the country, thousands, even tons, of unwanted, unused prescription medications wind up in our trash streams, sanitary sewer systems, or wind up in the wrong hands in our illegally sold or abused. Teenage children who use these allergic drugs often find them in their own family's medicine cabinets. In an effort to reduce this type of drug abuse in the town of Elton, the town has implemented a drug take-back program. The program is simple to use. Simply do an assessment of the unwanted, unused medications in your home, bring them to Town Hall and place them in our secure box. The one thing that we ask that you do not bring are sharps, hypodermic syringes, razor blades, or any other type of sharp object, then they injured one of our personnel while cleaning the box out. So, on behalf of the men and women of the Elton Police Department, Mayor Rob Alt and the Board of Town Commissioners, we ask you to join Team Elton by participating in the drug take-back program and helping make Elton a safer place. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lois George. I'm the administrator for the town of Elton. We're here today at the Elton Wastewater Treatment Plant at 200 West Placey Highway in Elton. This is an enhanced nutrient removal plant that was constructed by the town between 2006 and 2008. It costs $40 million and processes about 2 million gallons a day from Elton's roughly 7,000 customers. One of the issues we have with a plan of this nature is the treatment of prescription drugs that many people put down their drains or flush down their toilets. Prescription medications are very complex chemical compounds that treat a variety of human conditions and diseases. I ask that everyone participate in this program, bring their medications to the Elton Municipal Building. It's open 24/7, 365 days a year. It's absolutely free. And we do not disclose any information about the medications that get into the DEA Baltimore and destroyed properly so they don't affect the environment. Thank you very much. And we look forward to your participation in our program.
Turned out nice. Now, it's going to look much better, of course, on the Blu-ray. And, you know, we put this together in literally two days. So it's, I think, pretty impressive. It gets the message across. We're going to go ahead and move forward to get the monitor and get this thing playing. And I think the Union Hospital wants to play this across their system. I think it's going to be a great thing for us. And thanks to all of our participants, our actors. Thank you. Very nice. Very nice. Okay.
And Joe Pinder, too. I mean, he had something to do with it.
I'm going to go with the agenda. Can we? You're second on the agenda.
Okay.
We wanted to bring our friends from Artesian Water up here. We wanted to finally get to meet everybody. Can we squeeze up here and see what you've got with you or say hello with?
We'll say hello. I'm Joe Denunzio, Executive Vice President.
Of course, I do.
I think, yes, I think most of you probably are familiar with me. Diane Taylor, our President and CEO.
Oh, I think.
Congratulations, Mayor. It's a way to leave on your election.
Very good.
But we also have today, John Thader, who is our Senior Vice President, generally in charge of our operations and engineering. And Ken Brainerd, who, I'll just say Business Development because the title always escapes me. But no, a pleasure to be here, have a chance to...
Well, we... Impressive initiative to have.
Well, thank you.
I'm just hoping Lois should hold on tight where you're standing.
About 30 feet deep.
We should have had a harness on him.
Fall protection.
Of course, somebody want to put stones in his... Yeah, have a quick scene. We, of course, I think everyone had that, both of yous and the whole Artesian team over the years. And DJ and I are the two newcomers, kind of being back. And the first time for DJ. And I know that we have a partnership with Artesian and through 2019.
With the holes available afterwards.
There we go. And I think that as we start to move forward, you know, my position on it has always been, the connection was anyone that was around for 9/11 certainly knows how important having resources from multiple places. And it was an important interconnect for the town of Elton. And I know a little bit of the history. I've read. I was never really involved in the history of the agreement. I would love to continue our, from my perspective, continue our agreement for many, many, many years to come. And at some point, I think that we probably need to sit down, other than this setting, and start working on how we can work on that maybe in the future and what we have to do in the, as we go through the interim. I think that I'd love to get those guaranteed levels down a little bit, of course. And, but I understand the whole situation. But we're certainly looking forward to it. And I know that I've been going to the county meetings. I had a county meeting yesterday. We were, I was hoping that you would have been there.
I was not invited.
Well, I took that, we took that after we got done with the meeting yesterday, Lois.
Yeah, it's able to have vital part.
You would be. There's been a lot of discussion of...
Franchise agreement.
Franchise agreements for all areas and an authority, per se, by the county. And I know that you would love to have a key role in this in some manner.
By definition, I mean, we're here to serve the county. Some of us live here and think that the best thing is that we all find ways to do things, and that's everybody.
Yes.
And we would like to and expect to be a critical part of that infrastructure in the county and the corridors and port of transport.
Plan, all the plans.
Without question. One of the, the county had asked us yesterday whether we would, how far we want to go to our west, toward northeast. And I told them as far as we could annex, quite frankly, and provide them with services. And I know that with your agreement with not only the town but the county, it would be that you would be providing the water service and we would be providing the sewer service. And so I guess, as I've reviewed everything that I could, I'd love to have the annexation side of the things because that's the only way that the towns can survive. I think if you do the dollar and cents, I think we've gone through the numbers of water and sewer. And it's always a challenge to balance those things. And we're kind of a break-even. You know, we're not, we're not expected to make money on the town residents, but we try to provide a service.
And Lois mentioned in the video, the amount of money that you invested in a wastewater facility.
Yes.
And the ability to do a lot of things.
Yes, it would be. Yes, it would be. Any other questions for the folks that came down for a beautiful visit to the town of Elton?
You did mention you have new members.
Oh, a town attorney. I'm sorry.
Mr. Dowd.
A pleasure.
And Earl, I appreciate you bringing that up.
I could tell that Diane noticed there's something like difference in that.
And you can wrestle quite well.
Oh, Kenny?
We've been at the table like this a few times.
I think it did do as well, I think, Mr. Dowd.
Now, am I right in understanding that you're able to reduce your water bills to your customers? Is that a rumor? Is this like really the...
Well, we were, we were very fortunate that we were able to reduce the water rate by 11%. And part of it was that when all the assumptions were put into the model, it was assumed that we were going to purchase 375,000 gallons a day from Artesian. And we were able to bring that down to 250. So in that model, there was a difference. Now, if I could bring it down to 50, I could cut another 11%. So... So if we could bring it down to 50, then we got another 11% from this group.
Gold is 25%.
Yes, our goal, we could be there. You could help us meet our goals. But yes, we were able, we were fortunate to. And we're moving forward with another water and sewer study. And I strongly believe that we're going to be able to maintain that and maybe tweak a little bit more. But I think it was very important, I think the board agreed that we need to make sure that we're doing the best thing for our citizens. And it's just not because I wanted to drop them 11%. Let's put it that way. We have to have some checks and balances in place and to make sure that we're doing, doing the right thing. There we go. I think the latest, there was a, I don't know if we can discuss it today by any means, but I knew that we're doing a petition for, petition for annexation for...
Elton Gas.
Elton Gas. They're petitioning to be annexed in. Of course, that's in your service area of the water. I know, I'm assuming that they'll probably went to Town of Elton to service them, but I know by agreement we can't. But I just wanted to let you know that we'll get our annexation. And so I'm happy with that.
And the Elton Gas will be this town of Elton?
Yes. Yes. So that'll work out very well. Any, any comments, questions, any? None?
Thank you very much.
Well, listen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, listen, of course.
You've been here sooner, but you know, planning and organizing.
The counters just were not working.
Well, we have a nice restaurant right down the road.
I've already moved there all the way.
I did, too.
And of course, I...
One of the things I like to mention that we were having some technical difficulties with our water. And Artesian was, was very forth coming to help us solve those technical problems to get our one we have laying in there.
We ran the flow test.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They were saying we were right one spot to help. And we appreciate that, too.
And I think that that's exactly the way we always have done the work. And it's nice to be able to work with the town.
I know. We appreciate that.
Issues, let's solve them. And I think it worked perfectly. It's benefited that thing. And it's always wise. That was a nice wise test of, okay, let's see what happens when you try. That's the only way you know when you need it.
That's the way it works.
Well, very good. And I run into Joe quite a bit. And I've ran into Ken a handful of times here recently. So I'm sure that our communication will stay in full. And I think that as our conversations were, we were talking prior to, you know, 2019 will be here before we know it. So if we want to continue moving forward, I think that we probably should start some discussions soon and see where we need to be and how we can put it together.
And punish Amy Lee's, that would be important.
Yeah. Very good.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Nice, and it could be a wonderful day, too.
He's kept us out of the snow.
Thank you. All right, now we have a presentation from Precision Concrete Cutting. You're on, sir. Mr. Grimes, you are on. And I think if anyone's taken a look up front, I think that you've seen the trip hazards that we've removed. I'm not sure how far we went down. We did a few out here.
Yeah, we, just on North Street by where the trees meet the sidewalk panel.
And I can tell you, I just wanted to mention, I may have mentioned it before, but the unique thing about this system is that you don't replace the concrete that's in place. And there's, there's other methods that the town of Elton could go with. We could go with drilling some holes and what they call...
Pumping.
Pumping, pump jacking up. And they'll drill holes and they'll pump silicone or some type of other product in to level it up. But that can get a little crazy, too, because it's a challenge to balance it out. University of Maryland, where I'm down there, I've been down there now for, let's see, seems like about 10 years through the children. And they have used this system for all of their sidewalks because you have a lot of settling. And it just works out very well. And you're here to make a little presentation. This is something that I would like for us to consider putting into the budget. I think that maybe we won't do every street, but there's certainly neighborhoods that are worse than others. And I think that we need to do that four or five-year plan to get this whole thing done. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Alt, Commissioners Dan, and everybody else. My name is Jim Grimes. And I'm from Precision Concrete Cutting. As some of you may already know, I recently evaluated some of the sidewalks within Elton, such as East Main Street, Elton Heights, and Patriots Glen. As Mayor Alt pointed out upon entering the meeting today, you may have seen some of our completed repairs on North Street. I'll go through the executive summary with you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have afterwards. The slide shows eight of the surveyed areas that create trip and fall liabilities. Each has its own separate proposal. And in total, there are 3,482 trip hazards. This slide shows three of the eight surveyed areas which require curb cutting. Any curbs raised above the sidewalk panel are also considered a trip hazard and should be repaired. This is just one of the eight surveyed area maps. Shows an overview of the downtown area, which is broken up. This is actually East Main Street.
Is your company did the survey?
Yeah, I did it myself, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. These show the approximate pinpoint trip hazard locations on East Main Street and Crawl Street of Courthouse Lane. Again, these are the hazards on East Main Street and Crawl Street of Church Street. These are the hazards on East Main Street and Crawl Street of South Street. These are at East Main Street and Delaware Avenue. Trip hazards on East Main Street and Crawl Street of Howard Street. And this takes us down to Cow Pond on East Main Street. This goes into a little bit of the neighborhood. This is on Friendship Road off of East Main Street. These are the hazards off on Lucas Lane. And this is on Clark Street and the 100 block of Friendship Road. These are the hazards at East Main Street and Crawl Street of Mitchell Street. And this takes us to the beginning of West Main Street. These slides show the few remove or replace panels needed. Here's another slide shows a couple, a few remove or replace panels. This talks about our promise to you. While the sidewalks restoration project is underway, we will keep the sidewalk in service. We will not require any heavy equipment or traffic control. All debris will be removed and trash will be discarded. Concrete waste will be recycled. We will leave the area clean and trip hazard free. We estimate our saw cut method will save the town of Elton in excess of $550,000 over remove or replace. Within the state of Delaware and Maryland, Precision Concrete Cutting is the only company authorized to use the patented equipment and method for removing trip hazards as described by the patent numbers here. This goes into a little bit of the overview of our commitment, our call savings by contracting us for the work, our detailed reporting process, both of which I just went over, and any repairs to be ADA compliant. Now, not only is there a huge savings, in addition, we're also less in an environmental impact. For example, removing and replacing 100 panels would result in approximately 118,500 pounds of concrete being removed, or in other words, 59 tons of concrete. By using Precision Concrete Cutting to repair those same 100 hazards would result in only 0.3 tons of concrete removed and recycled. We would also save, we would also save an estimated 141 gallons of gasoline. This shows you a comparison between our saw cut method and grinding method. Now, as you can see, our repair leaves a smooth DEA-compliant surface with the adjacent panel. Now, when you look at the grinding method, it leaves scarring on the panel and they're unable to remove the whole trip hazard. These show just some pictures, examples of saw cut methods that we use. Again, how the panels raised on the left and on the right shows the repaired sidewalk panel.
How much time would it take to do a panel that big?
15, 15 minutes. From start to finish. And here are some pictures, examples of grinding repairs. Now, as you can see, there needs the scarring on the, on the panel. These show you a price breakdown, three different options for pricing. And this is based upon the size of the trip hazard. Option one is for all trip hazards of 3ths of an inch and above. Option two is for all hazards half of an inch and above. And option three is for all hazards 5ths of an inch and above. Any repairs completed are also guaranteed with a three-year warranty. So if we were, we were to complete the work now, any repairs done, any panels that pop up over the winter time, in the spring, we come back out and repair free of charge. Based on option one, to repair the 3,482 hazards would result in an 80% call savings over remove or replace, again, which would save the town of Elton in excess of over $550,000. All right. That concludes my presentation. Thanks for your time and opportunity.
I wanted to mention, when I'd asked Precision Concrete to come out and take a look at the area, I did not intentionally, not went like Delancey or Chapel or Buck Hill or Tompkins, Turnquist, Button Woods Neighborhoods, not to be included, but it was, it was a concept to see what the pricing structure would be on these neighborhoods. So I, I mean, it's, it's a unique process. I think there's a lot of trip hazards in our town. And I think it's one way that we can, rather than just to replace the concrete, take it out and replace it and attempt our best to put a new piece in and hope it doesn't settle again or rise. I think it's a pretty unique method to do. So I'm very familiar with it. This is one of the processes, you know, I was going last week at the World of Concrete. I've seen this in action multiple times, not only here for the town or other areas that I travel, but I've seen it in action many times. So I feel so, I'm very comfortable with it. But the rest of the board, if you have some questions.
I have one question. I was looking at it, I was looking at, I know that you probably had the answer for this, but I used to, snow gets on it. It looked like it would be a little bit more slippery off the spots that you were repairing. How does that compare with the gravel set in with the concrete that's set for it?
I know, I know the surface itself may show as a little shiny because it exposes the rock. We've removed the top shell and exposes the rock, but there's no, no difference in the surface when it's exposed.
So it has the grid and all that stuff that's in the concrete?
Yes, absolutely.
It's just that it looks...
It just, yeah, after, after some time, it will weather. And it does actually, it will match probably within another six months to the other, match with the other panel, the color and the thing. But yeah, there's no...
So normally, after you do this type of work, what other resulting repairs that may need to be done after you come back? The company I know is probably arranged, but is there a specific?
There's maybe a handful. I'd say maybe 1% to 2% pop up maybe over, after two years. But that's about it. I mean, we've completed work in Ocean City, Maryland, City of Lewis, and same thing. We have sidewalk program with them where we go back out and walk, rewalk in the spring. And none of our repairs generally have popped back up.
I did notice it had like a little rise to it. Sure. Now, what is the purpose for the hump in it? Is it going to settle down? Those are two things that I.
Sure, there's, it's an ADA, ADA compliant slant that we do. So for every inch it's raised, we come, you come back eight inches. So for, for it to be ADA compliant, you have to come back, as I said, eight inches for every inch it's raised.
So if you're removing an inch, you'll start eight inches back. So if it was up two inches, then you'd be back as far as 16 inches.
Correct.
And a quarter inch would be that two inch or.
Right.
I'm pretty good in that.
The trades, like I said, the trades an inch, you know, to a, to a zero, it goes all the way down to zero. That's when you'll see the slant that starts at eight inches and then it goes down to zero.
In your estimate, you know, between how many of those are, are trees going back?
I'd say approximately about thirty, thirty percent, thirty, forty percent.
So that's one of the main reasons why the trees are being cut? Because there's information about that that's being asked, why are the trees being, like this asked me today?
Why? That, I mean, I'm not sure why the trees have been cut.
Those trees have nothing to do with it.
Well, it has something to do with the landscape now here because you guys had to.
No, we, we only removed the trip hazard where the tree, where the sidewalk panel was at, where we met the tree.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm not sure why the trees have been removed.
Well, I'm just, I had that cast before I got in here today.
Yeah, I'm not, I couldn't answer that, I'm sorry.
So out of the three options for cost, I, I was, North Street now, option one, what option is out there?
Well, it's, it's broken down. Option one, each repair was $40. Because we took an average, I mean, there's, there's repairs that were, you know, half, started at a half an inch. There was some that were as high as two inches. So we took a, I calculated out and for option one, each repair was $40, which would, which gives you the better, better option. Option two, it starts at a half an inch and that starts, that repairs $50 per repair. But, but the repairs done on North Street were, were $40 if we were doing option one.
And critical was, I think it was sixty thousand? Was a, what was, what was options for you?
Option three was five, five eighths of an inch.
We had, that was the critical. Sixty thousand.
It was six.
It was sixty grand.
Pretty thing, five eighths, it was five eighths of an inch and above.
Right.
And how many of those have the trees? Did you ever drill down?
I could, I could go back and look through each step of the proposal, but, I mean, most of the repairs, like when you go along East Main Street and West Street were, were from trees. Now, some of the neighborhoods, like Patriots Glen, there were really no trees involved very minimal. I'd say, again, probably twenty-five, thirty percent.
So if the trees were still there and the roots are still, will that be, rather than two years, that coming back, would it be quicker?
Not necessarily. I mean, there's no telling how the root will grow. You know, and that's part of our program while we come back out if it pops up again. I mean, sometimes it's just, you know, the winter from, from the heaving, from the cold and it has nothing to do with the trees, but not necessarily for the tree roots.
The town has a tree pit requirement now. If you plant a tree, your sidewalks are recutter. It's actually a frame pit that they go into, the roots can't.
When does this come into effect? After, here's. You know, if you want to see what a tree will do, there's a great example. It's a great example of the tree roots because they've got that one hole where they're taking out the tree. And I tell you, it's, I've never seen so many roots on these small trees like this.
There's a rising cable under there somewhere.
They've exposed it.
Taking it out with a, with a toothbrush and a.
Any additional questions for Jim? Mr. Lemon?
What is the town's liability if somebody falls on one of these, these areas?
Well, actually, I do know that answer and once it, well, no answer. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, I, I prefer not to answer that question. I'll answer to you in private what the liability is to the town on the trip hazard.
Well, we're not qualified to say our liability in a case like that.
No, no, but there is a, there is a, there is a mechanism in place that, that triggers it. Dan, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this type of process?
I think I, you can see through the work out front. I think it works out. I think they've got the technique down. And honestly, we're limited by the old fashioned method ripping things out and replacing it. But his cost is a lot more effective than what we can do. So, I mean, just from a public work standpoint, it makes perfect sense because he can grind the thing out. He's, he's a lot quicker, he's more efficient at the same time, roots is up ripping out blocks at a time, so.
Are you saying that you can't take out and replace that panel 15 minutes?
I'll do it 10. I was just trying to calculate.
We'll do it in five.
There you go. Seven and a half.
Very good. Anyone else from the board have any questions? Thank you, Jim. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, let's go on to the Buttonwoods parking. Who's leading this conversation? Where are we at on the Buttonwoods parking?
Mrs. Laggard called me today. She couldn't be here because her daughter is having issues. I know, I know Bobby's here and there was supposed to be some, somebody else here too, but I've talked to a couple of people out there and it keeps getting back to the same thing of one house having five cars and not necessarily, I think it's 300, I'll say block, 300 places. There's a, a woman that is renting to four people. So those renters are, there's five cars for one house, which displaces other people that actually live next to it. And then, you know, you have visitors, you're going to have birthday parties, you're going to have apartment spaces, you're going to have whatever. But the, the thing is, is that it's become such a nuisance and inconvenience to people. They want something done. An HOA is going to be extremely hard. You have a lot of landlords in there that don't want anything to do with an HOA.
Exactly. I, I actually went through a couple of times this week and talked to three different people. And they're fine, they understand the problem that they don't particularly have teenagers and extra cars. And so they're, you know, a two car household, but they didn't want the homeowners to come in again. And they're, they're new, new residents in here. And they are all free homeowners. They're not renters. So we're back to, you know, half wanting, half not.
Is, is the answer creating more parking or is it issuing?
I think it's two, I think it's twofold. I think it is creating more parking, slightly more parking, but also instituting some type of permit parking. Not that you actually get to park in front of your house. And I don't know how we do it at Turnquist. I don't know if the number is on your permit and do you, is there a permit that you hang? So is something rang or is it a sticker?
Is your address on your, your permit?
No, just the number.
It's what number?
The number of, that, it goes from 1 to 500.
Okay, so it could be 498. I don't, I don't know if, if the discussions that I had, a lot of great ideas were, do you put, if you live at 302, you actually just put 302 there on, on that. And then this way, if somebody's from the 400 block is parking there or the 500 block, they can actually start self policing themselves. And do you, do they do one visitor pass or two visitors' pass?
I would suggest from the chief there on that part because everyone wants policing in Turnquist. Is that correct?
Well, it would be self.
We, we do.
The reason I'm saying towards what you're saying, we're not creating something different than what's at a Turnquist. If you, what, police yourself, in other words, you hear what I'm saying.
Well, they police themselves out there too, right?
Joe?
We got, we have, each, each resident gets two, two stickers, stickers that they have two cars. And they get one visitor's pass. You have one car, you get one sticker and one visitor's pass.
So it goes by registered vehicle.
Whoever lives in that house and they're registered in the state of Maryland, they get, they're allowed to get one.
What if they had five cars?
That's why we're just saying.
Two cars.
Two cars only.
Well, who provides the enforcement out there, Joe?
Well, when we had the parking enforcer, he came out and did the enforcement.
So someone had, in Turnquist, if they had three cars, they could put two on the stickers and one on the visitor pass?
Well, it's actually supposed to park over the overflow parking. Well, if you have a visitor's pass and you've got two cars and you've got a visitor comes in, well, you should take your car and move it in the overflow parking and let the visitor park in your spot. But that, that does create a problem because the visitor comes and is nearby there and they're parking at a different space and come out and put a visitor's pass in there, well, then they're going to park there until that person comes home. And of course, when that person comes home, then it creates a problem there. But it's worked. I mean, it's been working well.
We have, Turnquist has been, I'm not going wood somewhere, but Turnquist has been quiet for some time now. We haven't had a lot of activity out there, a lot of complaints. And I'll tell you that the police department's action taken on parking in Turnquist has been really complaint driven. We haven't gone out there really heavily, heavily enforcing parking violations. We understand that, hey, someone comes home from work, they got a, maybe a coworker stopping over for a half hour. Someone's having a birthday party, they forget that they got to come get visitor passes. And so it's kind of a situation where when we've gotten complaints, we've gone out and enforced. So just to make that part of your conversation.
I think what DJ has mentioned, which, which is a good start, we've got to try to identify two different parking spaces. One of visitor parking spot and the other for the residents. Now, I know you might not be at a park directly in front of your house, but at least you know that you're in that neighborhood, that area. That would be a number one starting point that we need to look at, identify. Now, if you have the three, four, five cars in the county without HOA, somehow the letter or news information need to be relayed to the residents that you only allow, not allow. We're trying to implement a parking issue and try to correct something. Here's what we're our first step is. But everybody's going to agree with that because if I was here first, now I'm not going to come take my parking. Now that's going to come down.
And I think that's going to be the issue because most of the people out there want to park directly in front of their home. Even if you provide spots, they need to be understanding that I got these spots, everybody can't park in front of their home. Then the other issue would be the handicap.
Mayor, you, real quickly, in Turnquist, you can park in front of your own house?
Yes.
Because you're, you still have your homeowners association active?
No. But otherwise, still somewhat courtesy because I can park in front of my house. But if someone else came in front of my house and had a sticker, they could park in front of my house and.
Bob, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, the 300 block where I live, there's, I crawled out last time, there's 36 townhomes, 72 parking spots. There's no room for a visitor there. They can park out on the street. I'm getting tired of parking in the fire lane getting tickets. When it snows, I'm sure I'm going to shovel out. Somebody gets in my spot, I'm telling you, cops don't like to be there if I'm pulling them out. I, I got a nice build truck.
You wouldn't be able to, the only way that you actually be able to have.
The thing is, there's people there, like you said, there's five cars.
Right.
There's three cars. All right, I have two cars. Okay, I don't bring my work truck down, out of courtesy for the neighborhood. Because then I would give three cars. I mean, there's, there's parking out on the road. I have two main tools in my, my personal truck to park out on the main road. And at the, at very end of the development, at the 300 block out on the main road, there is an overflow spot to where the visitors can go out there. So the visitor pass, all it's going to create is three vehicles per, per house. And the 100 block, they don't even have enough parking for two spots per house.
And you know that, I want to almost come back and say, you know, we're the blame when it comes to our, our planning and zoning ordinance. Listen, I sat on the planning board for many years and when, when developers would come in, they would say, our code is one and a half house, one and a half parking spots per house. And it sounds kind of crazy, but when they, when the, the, the average norm, when they calculate those, that's kind of what they put in as a calculation. It doesn't mean you got one and a half, some people's going to have two and some people's going to have one. But in today's, in today's standard, we all know it should probably be two and a half. Should be the number when these developments come in instead of one and a half. And we should probably look at changing then.
No, our, our current ordinance does require more parking spaces when we get complaints all the time about it based on the number of bedrooms now. But in 1980s, when this project came through, people didn't have three or four cars per house.
Yes.
And so it was based on what was, you know.
It's never changing. Would, let me ask this question. Would it, in, in, when I make this comment, we're in violation of our own code when I make this comment. If there was assigned parking spots in front of your house, would that resolve some issues or not?
When I first got there, which was in July, it, it, I, I, there was numbers on the spots. I don't know if the residents had done that before I got there. I know the town has had it since '08. I've heard. I'm not too familiar with that. But everybody was real courteous about it. I had a spot and next to mine was a vacant spot where me and the other guy on the very end, we would alternate. I, I had no problem doing that, you know? And if I had to park in the overflow, that's perfect. I don't care. At least I had a spot. But I mean, I, I don't know the legal aspects of everything, but there's enough for two cars per house. Everybody else, I mean, I, I have my parents come over. My pop even yelled at me when I said, you're not parking there. You got to park down there. And he was like, what are you talking about? Nobody's here. I said, yeah, but out of common courtesy, if somebody was, was to park where I park, I would be very upset. I said, so if you don't mind, you go down there. But not everybody's doing that. DJ, who was here in the yard, hey, has a handicap mother and, you know, she can't even park near her house after that. That's, that's not right. And she came over and said, there's eight handicap people in our block. I mean.
Well, Dan, how many proposed parking spots could we create in, in the whole neighborhood? Or did we just look at one, one area?
We looked at, we looked at section one, we looked at section five. And if we modify the existing concrete islands in section one, I think we can come up like eight additional spaces. Modifying the spaces in section five, I think we can come up like 11 additional spaces. That takes care of section one and section five. Just, and rule of thumb, you know, Aspen was here, they said it's about $2,000, give or take, do a spot. You can probably scale it back a little bit, but it kind of gives you an idea for the price. So those are realistic numbers. I mean, I can, these particular ones I could probably do cheaper because I do stuff in house about the same time. That's what I got planned at the moment, so. 100, 500 blocks, getting the islands and cutting it back.
19 spots. That only takes two, that only takes care of two areas.
Correct.
What blocks would that be taking care of?
100 and 500. They're the worst ones because they got three versus.
So it'd be 100 and 500 block and you told me the 300 block already has 72 spots?
Yeah, 72 spots.
Sounds like.
But if you expand too much, make more parking, then you've opened up, you've got more area. You have to stick with the store management. The store's getting too big. That opens up another area. So you have to be careful. In other words, I can keep these areas tight. In other words, I can keep these areas tight, but after that, you start expanding it, then you expand some more, you know, we can't store owner management and all that stuff, so. Those are trade-offs.
I, I don't mean to cut in, but the more spots you make, it's going to eventually be the same problem. You're not going to have more people parking. You know what I mean? I, I think it's a great idea, but until you get assigned parking or a parking pass, and if you have a visitor, then he has to park out in the overflow, I mean, the overflow out on the main street, then that, that may be a, a good thing.
So the overflow that you're calling overflow is on the street?
Yes, it's actually, I believe they're actually new spots they put in just recently, a couple of years ago.
18 spots. 18 spots between the 300 and 400 block. So that's the overflow.
What's your pleasure?
I've been in, I've been in Philly, Annapolis, Baltimore. I've been to many places visiting friends that had not assigned parking, but a parking pass. Where I literally had to park and then they would have a little hanger that you'd have to run out and turn around your car, hang on the rearview mirror. So I've been to plenty of places that have had these issues and they try to do the best they can. And we have, we have an entire neighborhood saying that they have an issue. To me, we have to do something. We have to take some type of action. The only thing that I can think of that's worked in Turnquist is some, a parking permit. And that doesn't guarantee anybody, anybody's spot. It just guarantees that there are, that you have two spots there. And then anybody else that doesn't have a parking pass or permit has to park in the overflow.
Do, do we have enough parking in the whole neighborhood to give everyone two spots? Based upon these additional spots that we're building? And it's.
Not by, not by area, not by 100 block, 200 block, 300 block. I think there's two, towards the top, I don't have my file with me, but those are actually short where you're not getting quite two parking, or cars.
Within the direct area, but there would be through that the whole neighborhood, you think?
We'd have to add them up. But you have the, if you're including the overflow, you might have that. The existing overflow that's already constructed at the bottom of that portion.
Joe, you had something?
I was going to say, if you go with the parking permits, I think the chief knows you're going to have to have a lot of enforcement because there's also people coming there that have Delaware tags. Like in Turnquist, I know we've had people living there for 10, 12 years.
Do you give them a parking pass for, to have Delaware tags?
Not supposed to, nope. They have to register in Maryland. But what they do, if they have a visitor's pass, they use the visitor's pass and put it in there. So if someone has one car, say, but they have a relative or somebody lives with them, the person has one pass, which is on this car, they use their visitor's pass so they can park right next to them.
So what happens when you move from, what happens when you move from Delaware into your area? So what are they given then?
They just get parking, visitor's pass. They get, they let them have their visitor's pass.
So you maintain the visitor's pass until you have your license plate changed?
Yeah, that's all, that's all, you know.
Well, if there was no visitor, if there were, I guess if you gave everyone two passes. When I say two passes, they have to come in and show that their vehicles are registered in the state of Maryland. And you don't give out visitor, visitor passes. Then there shouldn't be any issue because the ones that don't have a visitor's pass will have to park out in overflow.
Yeah, but visitor's pass will be given to somebody who moves that out. What do you give them? Let's say DJ moved out there on Turnquist. He's got Delaware plates.
Well, then you would have.
30 days, 30 days.
Well, not just any, any, you could have a contract with your landlord. You could have, where you just moved in there, you just bought the house, so you're going to, you're going to have all your contracts and stuff. You just don't have time to turn it over. Maryland is 90 days? If, if they had proof that, that you just moved in, you have a year contract with your landlord, you just bought the house. But you just have under the tags, you have, you have 60 days, you would give them a regular.
Right.
We issue a term, excuse me for interrupting, we issue a temporary pass. So if you just moved here, we give you 60 days. So your temporary pass expires 60 days from the day of issuance.
Is it a different color?
It's really big and it's yellow and it sits on the dash.
That one has a picture of Earl on it.
Pretty much. And then also just as an FYI, the comment about putting the house numbers on the tags. Think about the cost associated with it. We run these tags off with the permits for the stickers for Turnquist. They come in a very large, from 1 to 500, and that's how we order them. So for instance, if I lost my 300, then I'd have to order one 300 sticker for that house. So that's why the numbers go from 1 to 500. So if you came in and you were issued number 30, but however many months later you lost yours, you would probably get number 470 at that point.
How would you lose your sticker if it's supposed, if it's a sticker supposed to go in your car?
My windshield broke, I sold my car.
It's a sticker. Permanent sticker. I think we're all on the same page. I don't have a, listen, I know it's a pain, it's, it's crazy either way we go.
Right.
And I think we've.
I think it's just a more manageable way.
At least it's a start that they didn't have back then before.
To all the residents first, say that's what we're, the consensus is going towards.
Let's do that. Let's do that. All right. That's what we're going to do.
With the passes, we're. In order to replace. We might have to put a $10 renewal thing. To change it because we can't keep replacing something because somebody lost or they just start to shift. Just something we can think about as we go.
I don't know if I'd do visitor's passes.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to send a letter out to everyone in Button Woods and get their opinion on it. And I think that's.
That's a great idea.
Very good. All right, Button Woods is the.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, all right. Next we have Ms. Jean Minner going to talk about the historic district design standards.
I'm here before you tonight to request approval to award John Milner Associates a contract for $36,278 to develop historic district design standards for Elton's downtown area, Elton's Historic District. A few years ago, the Historic District Commission, Aris, Elton's Historic District Commission, had requested that funding be set aside to hire a consultant to develop design standards specifically downtown Elton's architecture. Currently, what they're using as the default until they get these standards is Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. And those standards are, they're good standards, but they're broad-based and not specific to the architecture of Elton. So the board, the Historic District Board finds it difficult sometimes to interpret that when applications come toward them. Something like this is a little defensive in court. If it's, it's been done by a professional and it's something clear, put a board to follow. They have better, a better handle on what they can and can't allow and will and cannot allow in the Historic District. And changes the historic structures and all that. A little bit of history, I had put out a request for proposals two years ago and we received one response. And it was at least 10 different companies that sent us it. The one response was not acceptable for the approval. So I looked at the RFP and made a little bit of my earthquake and put it out again last year. And we received two responses. And the Historic District was not happy with those responses either. And so the architect on the board had recommended John Milner Associates. They have a number of firms, one in Virginia, one in Westchester, Pennsylvania. The other firms that we had been soliciting were in Maryland. They were trying to keep it in Maryland and that wasn't working. So I contacted the John Milner Associates, JNA, out of Westchester, and they replied. And they had a nice proposal that they submitted. And so the board would like to. They'd like to go ahead and move forward with this proposal. I had set aside money in my budget to pay for this and I have $60,000 in there now. And then after another thing, John Milner says he proposes $36,278. The Historic District Board would like to go ahead and move forward with this.
Can you get copies of that for the board? Perfect.
I think I do. I was in Annapolis. I didn't know if you, I didn't know if you wanted, if you wanted copies of these or not. Sometimes you get a blizzard of mail and so.
Very good. I would say that, let's all take a look at this, review it and.
I'll present us the meeting on the 18th.
Yes, that'd be fine. That'd be fine. Yeah.
Do what?
We've got, and of course, on next Wednesday, I was going to ask the board.
You want to do it in March, first meeting in March?
Yeah, is that too late?
Well.
We'll make it so in two weeks.
That's fine. I'll just, they, they asked what the status of the approval was.
It looks good. When you said money aside, was it the 14 budget or 15 budget?
This year. And this made, this made one in next year's budget, so I have to make sure that there's money in there. As we're filling names, it's a up to 26 week project for them to do this. I want to make sure that whatever. Balance is owed on the contract is included in next year's budget after July 1st.
You did, you're very good. The, anything else with that, Jean? We'll take a look at that.
Now, the price for JMA was, was actually in between the other prices we had received. It ranged from about $20,000 to $43,000 plus. It was, and the plus was, this is what it is, and then there's additional product materials, which we didn't ordinarily sign a contract for. And one of the proofs that we didn't go, so the 36 was between the 20 and the, and the 43 that we received previously. So it wasn't out of, it wasn't unusual among.
Very good. I want, you, you were asking about the meeting. Next week's meeting, I'd like to move the time to 6 o'clock. Is that going to be possible for you? Take a quick peek at that. Is 6 o'clock good for you? They're doing the, well, we have a public hearing at 7:05 that we have to be at here. But at 7 o'clock, they're going to start the, the reveal of the Lyne's Pharmacy Restaurant and Hospital makeover. It's next Wednesday is the actual filming day at 7 o'clock. So, so we'd like. You will not be here.
Change is all in the hand next week. We have same delay.
Can we just move the meeting to the following week then?
Yeah, we've advertised, we've actually advertised the public, the public hearing. There's a public hearing on the sign ordinance and we've been holding up at 7:05 next week.
Yeah, you need a quorum.
And we need a quorum, but we would have.
If you could be three of us.
Yeah, there'll be three of us to have a quorum. And then you won't be here, you won't be here, that'd be fine. We'd shoot it through. But we, if we could start at 6 o'clock, it'd be great. And then we'd have the public hearing at 7:05 and as soon as the public hearing's done, I'm done and I'll shoot on down. As long as we don't have a lot of opposition about the sign ordinance, and there shouldn't be. So hopefully it's a public hearing to be a one minute, and I'll run down and make my television debut. I think, I think we're all, I'd say we're all going to be invited to this event. I haven't got an invite yet. But I've been told that I'm supposed to be down there for the, for the, for the meet and greet.
Yeah, we'll advertise the week at 6:00.
Earl just invited me. So if we could do it at 6 o'clock, I know we can't change the meeting date because of the public hearing, is that correct? I mean, we, we got, we're holding it for 6 because the public hearing advertised for that meeting at 7:05. That's fine. We would piss off the customer if we have it one more week away. Is that correct, Jean?
I just think there's a problem with the advertising requirements for the year.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to. I don't want to upset the customers.
Of all people, I'd be equally prepared.
Well, the show's going on. We're going to have the meeting at 6 o'clock and then at 7:05, we're going to do the sign ordinance. Very important to our customer. All right. Very good. Town of Elton Charter, the election part, John's been working on. I think we all had a, hopefully we had a chance to take a look at it, review it a little bit. And I think I sent an email with, with my questions that, that I think needed probably maybe in that whole concept. But I like where we're going at with it.
What we, what I hope you have seen thus far is a table of contents that would encompass the entire effort. I don't know that you've gotten chapters yet for the entire table of contents, but we're kind of. Worked through and Michelle tells me we've seen one thus far. We've had several more to the same at this point. We'd like your comments and, you know, I care whether it's proof and, or content or whatever, but like to get your comments and incorporate it and get that turned around quickly.
I think I had three on my email and I, and I don't even, let me see what I put on my email. Okay, I had, one was, I felt that during this process, I'd like to change the filing deadline for a person running for election at least four to six weeks prior to the election. Currently, right now, the way that it is in our election process, it's the first Tuesday of May and then the election is on the third Tuesday of May. So you have a total, if you waited till the deadline date on the first Tuesday in May, and if we had to evaluate, if there was a curve ball that was thrown in the air for some reason that we had to disqualify that individual or person, then it, there could be money expended by that person as well as maybe unnecessary money spent by other candidates. Good, bad, or indifferent. And I think if we move that back to the filing, if the election is on the third, as currently the third Tuesday in May, if we made it the third Tuesday in April as the filing deadline, a month prior or how it may be, I think that would be sufficient. That was one comment I had. So for us to kind of think about that, if that makes sense or doesn't make sense. The, the other was the changing the date of the election, which I think we all kind of talked about. I know it was discussed prior to the last election that the mayor and commissioners were wanting to change that date of this past election and for the budgeting process. And I know there's been a lot of history with the Town of Elton for it to be that third Tuesday in, in May. And, and I say third Tuesday, or is it the fourth Tuesday? Third, third Tuesday? Fourth Tuesday in May, correct me, fourth Tuesday in May. And sometimes that fourth Tuesday always falls, could fall after the day after Memorial Day. It also gets into that, you know, we're getting into the budgeting process. There's a, there's a lot of issues surrounding it. It's been like this for probably as long as the charter has been intact. But we also know that we don't get the biggest turnouts for our elections. So a suggestion I, I have that if we would like to have a, a larger election process or larger turnout, maybe we should consider having the election after Labor Day. Maybe the, the first week after Labor Day in September. That would give everyone that's on vacation a, a chance to get back to vote. So I don't know. I mean, that was, that was item number two that I want everyone to kind of consider because we have to give this information to John to put into the, the charter. I also feel that we could do some type of restriction where election signs can only go up 30 days prior to the election. That's, you know, that's just me thinking. I, I know in the election process, there's people who put up signs 90 days, 120 days. But quite frankly, I think it's. but quite frankly, I think it's thirty days prior would be plenty of time. And then also, the size of the signs in residential zones. I think that we're crazy to put four of eight signs in the residential areas. And I know it's, once again, is, are we allowed to put those type of ordinance in place? But I just think that... Exempt, signs are exempt? So those were my comments that I wanted to make sure that we discussed or talked about. I'm okay if, if the election date stays the same, but I think that listen to the concern that we had before, prior to the election. Maybe we wanna push it out. And I think the, the signing up time, we should make it a little bit further back rather than a couple of weeks prior.
I agree with them, and I've been the one to bring it up a few times about the date being changed because of Memorial Day weekend. We didn't move forward with it, but we are discussing charter changes now, so I really think it should be changed. I love the bit in September when people are back from vacation. And I'm definitely with the timing, the port handling as well.
As far as, under the First Amendment, you can't say when or how big though.
Not the subsidies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And then, I would, I don't care really what month it is. I think you should move it further away from Labor Day, only because of some schools starting at different times. Delaware, Maryland, yeah, I guess it wouldn't matter, 'cause most Maryland schools are starting early now. To move it to the end of September. Has anybody talked to the NML about other towns that have had successful elections and when they are?
The unfortunate thing is, most towns don't have so-called successful elections, because oftentimes, their turnout's just really low typically. But I can query them for the dates of their elections.
And then, is it something where you wouldn't wanna make it too close to a national election?
The only reason that I would not want to make it close to a national election would be because if, for a national election, you're also doing the county commissioner or county council and so forth, and Elton is one of, it has three districts.
Right.
So there'd be a lot of confusion as to where you would come. This is the only place that you vote in Elton for Elton, but at a national level, there are, I believe, three different places in Elton to vote.
One of the meetings that I attended at Maryland Municipal League was in regards to elections, and actually, Louis was at that meeting. And they talked about even making municipal elections the same date as the primary for the county elections. And you have to get permission from the county, but there's a lot of opposition against that. There was just too many moving parts that you're competing with on that same day. So if you went in for the primary, not only are you voting for your primary folks to vote for, you could vote for the town folks, but there was, there is some municipalities that are doing that now, but the, the trend was not to go that way.
Because of the county people feeling, county, state, federal people feeling that it's just muddy the waters or not?
I think it was the overseeing, that who do you, how do you do it on the ballots? Do you ask the person to vote here and then go over to this ballot if they're in town? And in a town, and in, like Michelle was saying, currently in the town, we would, it would probably be three times as many polling spots that we would have to create, because there's a Thompson Estates District, an Elton High School District, and Nike, they used to vote at the Knights of Columbus, but it's somewhere else now. Those three voting points within the town.
So the, the only problem is, the, being that close, the town signs were being mingled in with the county signs. If you moved it in September, that's the only issue you have, because now, I know when I was knocking on doors, they're like, oh yeah, I vote ads. And I'm like, no, 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 no. You have to go downtown, and our signs were the only signs up at that time, which was nice.
But there was a lot of sheriff, people running for sheriff had their signs up early. A lot of people did have early signs up. 'Cause I heard the same thing. For the primary, we were right before the primary, so they were mixed at that time. So there's another reason.
And I, and I agree. Yeah, I could see, I could see our signs getting blended in with county, county, 'cause the primary's gonna be in, what's the county primary, August?
June.
June, and then into the general, it could, without question, could be mixed. The answer may be not to move it.
Well, actually, though, with the primary, there's more signs up at that time rather than the election. Because you look at sheriff this year, there were, how many people running for sheriff? Nine or twenty? And then you had all the Democratic Party running for council and the Republican. So while our signs were up, we were mixed with all the primaries. Then once the primary election, then you're just left with one candidate, which if we move the timing to September, you're not up against everyone running.
Well, if it stayed in May, you wouldn't be running against, there wouldn't be any signs.
Yeah, there would, there would be.
Pat, you had a question real quick.
Just as somebody from the general public doesn't know a whole lot about elections or anything, last year, I was so confused with the signs. I was like, I don't know who's running from the town, I don't know who's running from the county, but this one's running for the sheriff, this one's running for judge. And I was like, I'm not even sure who I'm supposed to be voting for at this point. I was very confused.
'Cause that primary was huge.
Thank you.
Why don't you keep it simple and just move it back one week? Which gets you out of the holiday thing, and then adopt your idea a month in prior.
Going backwards isn't a bad direction either. Going, going backwards is not a, a bad direction either. And look, I was just thinking about us guys canvassing. It's a little cold out there during our canvassing times.
Very springy.
There's a few cold days. Those were my thoughts. I think that we need to give some direction on what, what way we wanna go, and I think let's, let's sleep on it. It could go backwards, it could go forward. And, and the next, if we get this done by the next election, who it's gonna affect are Earl and Charlie. So I think it's important for all of us to think about how that would go. Not next year, the year after. Year after, in two thousand.
Sixty.
Sixty. Yeah, it would be next year.
It would be this next year.
Yeah.
Right. No, I was thinking county.
Everyone would be, yeah. Any other comments on what we reviewed at this point?
Just how about Paula's? Did every, did you get all, all the movements?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't really, it's waiting yet, but I've gotten, I'm kinda waiting to get, rather than doing piecemeal and look at it individually, just...
Ended with this, this, for moving it back a month for a filing date before a change in the election date. I don't think that was discussed or presumed, but Paula, I'm not sure.
As far as moving it back, I'd actually move it back six weeks instead of four weeks.
The filing deadline?
I would.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think actually, a filing deadline would be better, having it back further.
I think it should be at least six weeks prior to the election.
So I think we have a consensus on that.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do with the...
But we have a change, as of right now, it's the same day.
Okay.
If you move it back, or if you pull it forward a month? 'Cause I had said that, I had said that at a meeting one time, and I didn't wanna pull it back too far, because I don't wanna walk around in a park and knock on doors. You don't wanna do that, but a month?
April, it could be in April.
So April.
Would add a conflict with Easter.
Why don't you just go back to the first, well, day?
You could, you could go back to the first Tuesday in May.
Because the third or fourth Tuesday could be no one of that. So if you went to the first or second, you're still away from the holiday.
You are.
So...
What you just said.
First or second, second, second Tuesday in May. We'll just move it back two weeks. Move it back two weeks. How you like that? How you like that? And then six weeks prior to that.
So John's gonna set it at two weeks, the second week in, in May, and six weeks prior to that, March? Back in March, you're gonna have a, your filing deadline.
Wait a second, so we could preface. And then, and then six weeks prior, six weeks prior will be the filing deadline. All right, there we go. All right.
One thing I do wanna suggest, though...
Yes.
For, for new candidates such as myself, is there should be a packet of, of this is what's allowed, this is so on and so forth. To ham and egg, it is hard to come in and constantly calling air and bugging Michelle. Constantly, calling in, trying to figure out, is this allowed, is that allowed? And then also, once you have a new person elected, there should be a two, at least a two-day, this is the artisan contract, this, that's what this is, that's what this is.
Didn't get that.
No, no, nobody likes to venture that. So that's what I, personally, I think, and Michelle's brought that, it's not my idea, it's Michelle's idea.
I agree. It should come with directions, so it's office.
At least you're not asking the same question that's been asked by new...
Right.
Well, I think you, I, I agree with you. We need to have a scheduling where, where the new elected official comes in and you're meeting with, right on down the line, and get educated on the process. And, and I can tell you, there's also, you know, at Maryland Municipal League, they have during that week that we go to conference, it's always a conference for the newly elected. And so the timing was always right to go to that.
Yeah.
They have an orientation, but you know, we should take it a step further. We should schedule the orientations here.
For us, yeah.
And bring them here, and then we could have that two-hour class, and it tells you the dos and don'ts. And I, and I also think a part of that should be understanding, Robert's rules of order, is what, that's what we go under, and quite frankly, I, I need to be brought up a little bit on that, and I think we all do. And I think it just makes for a more fluid meeting and a little bit better.
Where the water tower's on, where the pumps are, the, the, all that stuff.
Oh, the water.
The layout of it, I think I...
Not even a slide from Louis.
All right, Lou, you're in charge of that project. All right. Discussion of the yard waste collection.
That's why I'm here.
Very good. Dan, you and Cindy wanna come up and join us?
Love to.
All right.
Don't run, don't run.
Don't run away, don't run away.
Just say no, and I'll leave, and go.
Well, just to kinda, just to recap, in, in general, you know, one of the, the, you know, I'm not a yard waste guy. I, I think that a lot of the, the problems that our Public Works Department has is that we're always going back over and over again, picking up grass clippings. And quite frankly, if it, if the, if our customer puts out the grass clippings at ten o'clock, and we get there at nine o'clock, it's our fault. If, if they're out at eight o'clock, and we pick them up at nine o'clock, and we don't clean them up sufficiently enough, it's our fault. So, I mean, we do everything that we can, and there's a lot of times that everyone does everything correctly, and then we have a downpour of rain, and we can't get to it for the next day, or maybe we're off cycle for maybe a week. And we also know that now the neighborhood's starting to look ugly, the, it starts to ferment, and there's odors all through the streets, and we know what that goes, but there's more to this than that. The mission from a beautification is one thing, but the other part is, when, as Sidney has elegantly explained before, that the, the clippings, when they go into our storm drains, it causes more than just one issue. And it's an ongoing problem, and our permitting process for the town of Elton could be affected, but what here?
The watershed implementation.
And that would be, I think it's in two thousand...
The deadline is two thousand twenty-five.
Two thousand twenty-five. So we have to have all the, this is gonna have to happen by two thousand twenty-five, no matter what we do, but we have to take these actions in place to get to that point. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's two-year milestones starting in two thousand twelve, upwards of two twenty-five. And the state, they want some type of proof that we've been making full progress with this.
The, the county currently does not do any clippings for anyone in their neighborhoods. It's been a real nice service for the town of Elton for many, many years to provide the grass clipping service. I think we all saw the quotation that we received from Waste Management to pick up our clippings for us, and I would say, whatever that number was, can I disclose that number? Was that a ballpark, or is that, was that a confidential bid number?
What's that, how is it ballparked?
Ballpark number of the Waste Management clipping to pick up the clippings. I'm gonna... Okay, here, I see that. The, 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 the number was, well, is the number on there? Yes, yeah.
Yeah, you typed it up.
Two hundred, oh, four hundred. For, for Waste Management to do the whole process, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, is that correct? Or is it the bottom one? Two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Right, options, one of them, we provide the totes, the other one says they provide the totes, so, yeah.
So if, if we were able to get them to, we provide the totes, in these totes, we would put the grass clippings, they would come once a, once a week to pick it up and dispose of it. We figured it was gonna be a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar cost to the town. Now, if the town of, with the town of Elton currently doing that, if a private entity can do it for two hundred and eighty-two thousand, I believe that the way that we're doing it today is probably far greater than that, is my belief. I think it's costing us more than two hundred and eighty-two thousand to pick up what we're doing and the way we're doing it. So the, the, what I'm proposing is, is a couple of options here. Option one, I, I just don't wanna pick them up anymore. The, the, it won't be picked up. I'm happy, I'm happy to sell this to the public and take the heat for it, but we have to do it in a positive way. We have to create marketing brochures and, and put, deliver to everyone in the town of Elton, here's why we're not doing it in this, in it, because of these reasons. And, but, when we take away a service from our town, we also have to start providing much better services for this money that we're gonna be saving. We have to go up to a whole new level. So that was option one, just kinda get rid of it and no longer do it. Option two would be, if we could get the residents to bring the clippings to a specific site. So right now, if someone wants to take and, and mow the grass and, and not put their clippings back on their yard, they can currently take those up to the landfill themselves at, if, there is a charge, though, for that. Was it, Lou, and that what we determined? There, there was definitely a charge for our residents to take it up there themselves, so that's an option for them. But then, the other option would be, and, and what I was ready to propose, didn't turn out this way tonight, but we were thinking that we could take them, create a dumping site. When I say dumping site, would be an area where residents could take their grass clippings, that wanna do the clippings, drop it off, the next day, drop it off in a designated area by the town, and the town would be able to go that day, probably every day or every other day with the, with the sucker, and vacuum them up.
That'd be better than that. You go in the backhoe with the, backhoe five times. It'd be a lot, lot more convenient.
So you would, it, it would be done a pretty quick basis. Our thinking was using Marina Park behind the tennis courts as a convenient area for residents to take their grass clippings, and they could put them in a paper bag, not a plastic bag if they want, or they can just dump them down onto the ground through some type of tube. The problem there is, it's in the critical area, it's in a stormway, and we can't do that. So my option B, that I was ready to propose, came to an end today when I found out that we couldn't, couldn't do that. So we'd have to find another location, a convenient location for our residents to do it. And I don't have that answer. I don't have that answer. Mr. Lemon, you have a comment?
On your option one, which sounds okay to me...
On your option one, which sounds okay to me, can Waste Management offer individuals that service, even though the town might not be involved in it? In other words, if you send that, your announcement, you could say, you can contact Waste Management, and they will provide this service for you for whatever the cost is.
I'm glad you're on top of that, because I think that would be a great comment to see. Lou, I mean, I, I think that's a great suggestion. I will personally look into that, to see if they could come in and, and offer that service to them.
Might be very expensive.
It could be very expensive.
And in a given neighborhood, you may have a total of.
Ten.
Twenty pounds of grass, and they're, they'll send a crew, I mean, a man with a.
You know what they're going to do? Is they're going to say, we're going to pick it up. They're going to pick it up in regular trash, is what they'll say. Put it out on the same day as trash day, and, and we'll, we'll put it in a, in a separate container, but it'll be in the same container. Joe?
I think that, you want an option about having the residents take it out, and dump it in a specific place? I mean, I'm not going to put a bag of grass into my car, and haul it all the way up there and dump it, because it may, it may spill in the car or something, a lot, I don't think a lot of people would ever do that.
It, it's a challenging decision there.
Well, what he was talking about, can you individually order this service? I would definitely ask the mayor and the commissioners, when you talk to Waste Management about that, is that Waste Management sends that individual resident a separate bill from how we're billed for our trash collection now? Because like I've said before, I don't want to pay for a service that I'm not going to use. If Waste Management comes back and says, well, no, we can't do that, we're going to have to be, it's going to have to be included in what we call our water bill, then every town, everybody in the town's going to be charged for that service. And I personally don't want to pay, I say, don't just pick, just don't pick it up.
Everybody in the town is being charged for the service now, whether you use it or not?
No, well, yeah. Well, no, because right now, Public Works is picking up the grass clippings.
How much does it cost per year to do this?
The bill is 25.35 quarter for residential properties. We don't pick up cash, and we don't bill on the water, that's our bill for residential property.
What's the, what's the cost per household, when you break it out with man-hours, gas, and everything else from us going around and doing this, to include the price of the trucks?
It's in a contract, seven something or something.
Yeah, you can answer that anywhere.
I think it's eight dollars and 29 cents.
That's a minor management for that, I don't know what the price is for us to do it. It's really numbers, yeah, I don't know if you.
And that was per, that was per month, right?
Yeah, there's a couple different options there, and.
DJ, on my bill, when I get my, what I call the utility bill, it's 26 something, maybe 26.75. Now that's for a three-month service, and that's for my trash collection.
That's strictly the trash.
Yeah, that's trash, doesn't have anything to do with grass clippings.
Right, right.
Because we're not only allowed to put grass clippings in our trash.
Right, and, and my thing is, in, in thinking about this, when you talk about billing individually.
Right.
I would, I would want to know what the, the total cost is, and then, I know there's people in my neighborhood that don't use it, I use it. Moving from Perriville, there was times I did put it in my trash, and there was, there was times I dumped it on the other side of the fence, because I had that luxury. There was other times I mulched it, it just really depend, you know, was, where was I, was I on a week's vacation? I come back, all of a sudden, it's eight inches high, I'm bagging it. So those, I know what Newark does, I have a family that lives up there, they have spots that the residents take it to.
Location.
They, they do, and it's, it's become extremely successful to do that. And they take the brush there, they take everything. I was at a place in, ah, man, somewhere in Pennsylvania, up towards the Pocony, and what they did at DPW, they actually had the, the huge, huge bins, or the, I don't even know what they're called.
You mean a roll-off?
Yeah, like a roll-off.
Like we have Public Works, 30-yard roll-off.
So, and there was a platform that you would walk up on, and you'd take your, your trash can, and you'd just dump it over the grass clippings over into the side, and, and go. So I think there's a lot of different options here. I mean, and, and when I say that we don't, you know, that we pay for it, and, and we pay taxes for it, everybody pays for it, it's part, part of the calculation of how much does it cost per household.
Right.
So then if we take that service away, how much is it? You're going to have a lot of people chattering, well, I want, I want to be rebated, I, I want my taxes decreased. So, you're going to have, you're going, you are.
I want, I said.
I've already heard it.
When you take away a service, we have to be, we have to be providing a better quality service somewhere else to make up for that, and, or you, or you do put it back into their pockets, the.
Right now, I mean, we're already at, what, 700, was it 750,000 deficit? So I mean, this would help cover that deficit heading into the next budget. You know, there, there's a lot of things to think about here.
Well, it's my understanding, and I'm sorry young man, I don't know your last name, but I'll call you Sidney.
Unbalanced to.
We have to show, we, we have to show the state of Maryland we're doing something about it.
Yeah, this has to be done.
So eventually, you're not going to be allowed to put your grass clippings in the street.
We're just buying time now.
Yeah.
Now, another thought would be, is if there's a way that we could incentivize the 35% of the folks in the town of Elton that are using this service to buy mulching mowers. And, you know, and I don't know how we, how we do that, but I, I believe that this is a challenge that we have to address. Now, we don't, listen, it's been budgeted for, for this year, but going into next year's budget, I strongly want to get rid of grass, grass clippings, and, and quite frankly, I'd like to make that decision now, for this season coming up, and I'm happy to be the one to create the, as I said, the marketing brochure and, and taking it out there, but I know that we're going to get a lot of heat for it. There's going to be a lot of opposition, but we have to have our ducks in a row on another option for them, and how are we going to improve our services? What are we going to do with these man-hours that we're going to have available to us to do other things, right? So, I wanted to just put that in everyone's ear again, because I do want to take it out of the next year's budget. We're still good for this year's budget, but I think that I, I need some feedback. Talk, talk to your, I, I'm sure it'll be in the newspaper here in the next couple days, so we'll get some feedback from our residents, and, and I, and I think it's, once again, I, when you go through some beautiful neighborhoods, whether it's the Elton Heights, or just, let's put any of our neighborhoods, all the neighborhoods, how nice they look, and when you see that little pile of grass clippings, it just.
It looks terrible. Come to North Street even, we just see the piles out there.
I'd even want to go by, and then I'd cut the grass the next day.
And you said town didn't get it.
No, then, no, then if they're for, for.
Mayor?
No, it's just grass, grass and clip, the leaves, right?
No, we would still pick up leaves.
Leaves are with the dependence, so.
But as far as we still use the chipper, if you had the big trimmed trees or limbs out there, you can put that out there.
Because those two things are with the dependent, that's why.
And, and listen, in storm situations, you know, even with the big limbs, and that's, that's, that's another thing that we'll talk about at another point, but we do have to get it to where people can manage the size of the, the, we have to, I don't want to use the words enforce it more, but we have to, I want to physically show people what the length of the.
Full and four.
What the length is. And then, but now in a storm situation, all bets are off. You put any size log you want out there, and we're going to pick it up, because it's, that's what we do.
Because we're hearing it up that way, exactly.
That's the way we do it. So, think about it a little bit more, we're going to have our budget meeting in, in two weeks on that length sequence.
When is it going to be revised? The financial, from like 14, when's it going to be? Wait a second. We're going to talk about the budget and stuff. We're talking about the 16 budget, but the 14 budget won't be. So how are we going to do that?
Well, I think what, what you're looking for is, you want to see, you want to see where we're at in. You, you can, you can give us as close as you can.
Well, what we have in 14, we will not know until the financials are completed, which will be at the end of the month.
Right.
But what we have in 15, we won't know yet, we can project, which is a whole lot of.
I'm not worried about, 15's a moving target. I get it.
He's got 14. 14's been done.
Well, we got the draft, and we're finalized, that, that will be completed.
See, that's what, that's what I've been asking for, he says, no, that won't be done until the end of the month. He said 14 won't be done.
We have the draft, but the financials, the drafts of the financials we have now, FY14, here, ended 6/30/14.
So, yes. Yeah, we'll work off the draft.
But we're not doing it for two weeks, we're just discussing everybody's kind of presentation, their requests, but yet like 16 budget, we're not voting on anything.
Yeah, and, and they're not going to, they're, they're going to show us the numbers that they're asking for, and then we're going to look at it and give them the input, and then, then you're going to calculate what all of our wish list is.
What our revenue are too, we won't have the assessment for the state.
You'll have all that. That's strange to me, because if Dan comes and he says that I want.
Not to say yes, that's all you have to do.
But you're not approving anything yet.
But I can't ask him a question, well, in 14, you didn't have those people, but you're asking for, you were able to do, your production was this, your efficiency was that, and you had less people, because then you had finalization of 14's in front of you, even though he's asking, you follow what I'm saying?
Well, we'll have the, there won't be audited financial statements in 14, we give you our, you know, cash basis accounting for FY14, if we want to look at a green bar, go to green bar, you can see where you ended FY14 in our books, but those aren't the audited financial statements. When you ask for reconciliation, I, I hear audited financial statements.
No, but you're, you're right.
We'll have the actual to, to budget, won't we?
And that's part of the audited financial statements, that there's a schedule of budget to actual, you know, by category. But you always give the green bar, because that year is over, we're not charging anything else still, but again, with the far.
But you have the draft.
They're not reflected in the green bar.
When I hear the word draft, I'm, I'm hearing, basically, it's just not put in, in PDF form, basically. You have all of the numbers, but it's just not put, those numbers haven't been put over to these columns for, to be presented to everybody, is that right?
No, well, there's, and they're presented, drafted to us, and we have to check them, you know, they.
It hasn't been approved by the account, is that?
It has been the opinion issue, and there hasn't been the management discussion announced as required as part of the financials, that hasn't been, that's dependent on financials. We don't have the last draft of the financials from which to work to develop the management discussion and analysis as part, parcel of the financials.
Give us what you have.
I don't want a shared budget, not to be shared, it's, I mean, it's very clearly the label, draft, not, you know, not to be shared.
Secret, secret, so, I don't know, can we, how much?
Well, I, I can tell you what ended, where FY14 ended, you know, that has no bearing on any individual apartments, but anything that was unspent or overspent, I can end at FY14, as far as it's thrown into the pot that is creating FY15 budget.
I get it, I, I absolutely get that, but if he's, if, and I'm going to pick on Dan, because he's sitting here, I'm not picking on him, congratulations.
Say yes.
He has a quarter of a million dollars, that if he's going to present to us on his wish list, I have this, 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 and this, I can't really say, well, you know, you didn't, you didn't have enough people, and you still were able to accomplish, do you really need a quarter million? You only had two, because now everything's finalized, and.
We, we can present.
I think that's the hard, the hard part for me, is.
We, we can present a, what we call a green bar, that will show for two weeks from tonight, that will show what was actually spent in FY13, FY14, and show you where we are in the current year, budget to actual, so you can kind of use that as a kind of a.
Well, budget, again, that budget to actual is, as far as this is, is a moving target, because you're going to have different, you're going to have different expenses and, and stuff. I'm not worried about, I'm more worried about what's been already finalized, but okay.
Pat, you have one last question?
Just real quick, when you were saying that you, like, don't want to have this grass clipping pickup in the next budget, okay, the fiscal year starts July 1st, right?
That's correct.
Wouldn't you be cutting that service off right in the middle of grass cutting season?
Well, it, it could be very possible that, but we wouldn't allow that to happen.
Oh, okay, just.
It would be after the season.
Yeah, one more thing, what do you do this time of year with people that are, just don't pay attention, putting stuff out on, in the street to be picked up, that's still laying there? Branches and leaves.
Well, I, I think that Dan could probably answer that better, but anytime one of our town of Elton trucks go by, they're, they're.
I'll tell you my concern.
The goal is to pick up.
Where this pile is, if, if we get snow, let's pray we don't, that actually has to be plowed. If a plow comes down the road, and there's a car parked on the other side of the street, and it has to veer over, it's going to snag the branches and the leaves and everything in the plow.
What's the address?
It's on Malmsteen Road, it's where I live.
There you go, it's done.
And it's been, and it's been there, it's been there for almost a month. I mean, you'd think the people that live there would get the hint, they're not coming.
Yeah, we start, we start picking up in the middle of December, because we can bring our trucks over in the snow, but that's the reason why.
Yeah, this is February, you'd think the guy would have got a hint by now.
What, are Christmas trees till March, or April?
This is tree branches and leaves, a pile of leaves, all in one.
But we did, you know, that's, that's what we have to do to better educate everybody, too.
It's advertised in the paper, I mean, it's on.
I know.
Website.
I know, Mr. Lemon?
May I ask a question that's not on the agenda?
Go ahead, we've got two minutes.
I can't do it, two minutes.
All right.
And I see Earl and Mary Jo are getting ready to.
No, I'm not, Mary Jo is cold. Mr. Lemon, I'm cold.
And I, I have to read my notes, I left my teleprompter at home.
Yes.
Want to ask about the water bills, you all talked about this shopping center that's not being charged. What's being done about that to charge it?
Yeah, actually, we.
They're being charged.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't hear the answer.
I got it. The, the shopping center is being charged, and they have paid all the past mouse money owed.
They have?
Yes.
Boy, that's a great answer.
Yes.
I asked Steve a question the other day about this million, million, $200,000 bill that was paid, and he told me it's interest on the water.
It was principal and interest.
Annual debt service payment for the wastewater treatment.
Steve's always very helpful to me, he answers questions, and he knows a lot.
Very good.
And I don't, but the question, the question is, have, have we reviewed that to see if we're getting the new lower interest rates?
That was funded by a combination of grants from federal government and from low-interest loans paid by your flush tax, funded in part by your flush tax. The $7.50 you pay for your, your water bill.
And, and I can tell you.
It's low-interest loans.
Yeah, I can tell you, Mr. Lemon, that rate was well under two, in fact, I think it's one.
Two or three, or so, it's a little higher.
Yeah, and I'll bring that, next Wednesday, I'll tell you the exact rate of that, but twice a year, we pay that payment?
Yeah.
To the state.
We're financing it, Mr. Lemon.
Now, my last question is, I think it's my last question.
Oh, and this is your last one?
That's only a lucky ask, right? How do you know that you're not missing other buildings and locations in this town? Are you checking, have you checked the property records against the billing, the billing sheets that were listed, put out?
I can, yeah. Okay, I can tell you that we have, we went back through 2000, 2006 or 2007, and we matched up all the certificate of occupancies with who we have as current water users and sewer users. So we did an audit that way, and we also, this led into a few other things that we're doing. We're currently examining, or we move forward to get some of the larger diameter meters to recalibrate them, to make sure that they're on target, because as a, a water meter gets older, it fails to the benefit of the customer, doesn't fail to the benefit of all of our residents, it fails to the user. So, for example, there could be 10,000 gallons going through there that possibly may not be in charge for. So we've attacked the larger users, and we're also moving forward to put meters on all the, what do I want to say? The, the nonprofit, undilled, there is some, some, not businesses, there's some charity.